Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting on Wednesday, August 28, 2024. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. LeVille, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules the council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which may be before a city council and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is David Brennigan.
Good morning. I'm Dave Brennigan. I work in the Executive Director of Lawrenceville United. We're located at 11850 Second Street, and I'm also a co-chair of the Pittsburgh Housing Justice Table, which is a coalition of 130-plus organizations and individuals all focused on housing policy to make, keep Pittsburgh home for all of us. So, I'm here just to speak again in support of Councilwoman Gross's ordinance amending Stop the Violence Funds to provide funding for eviction prevention. Want to thank all of our cosponsors on council for that and all of the support we've gotten on council to date on that. Just want to stress how much work has already gone into place and how much consensus there is of this being a really smart policy. We've collected over 1,500 petition signatures supporting this, supporting a right to counsel in the city of Pittsburgh. We have dozens of organizational sign-on letters here, which I'll email out to council afterwards. And as I said, we have a coalition of, a very large coalition. So, this has been a major focus of our efforts. You know, this is a really exciting opportunity for the city of Pittsburgh, I think, to be joining the ranks of just 22 other jurisdictions across the country that are guaranteeing legal representation for all of their citizens who are facing eviction. We know how devastating evictions are, and this is just a really smart policy, I think, good use of funds to ensure that we're getting better results and keeping people in their home. And I'll end it there. Thank you so much for everyone's support.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Schmidt.
Good morning, Council. It's been a little while since I've been here. I'm Sam Schmidt. I'm here on behalf of the Housing Justice Table and just as a private citizen to speak in strong support of the Tenant Right to Counsel Plus initiative sponsored by Councilmember Deb Gross. As a socialist, I firmly believe that housing should not be a commodity to be bought, sold, or traded for profit. Housing is a human right, not a privilege reserved for those who can afford it. In a just society, no one would face the threat of losing their home due to the whims of a market driven by greed. These tenant protections are a crucial step toward preventing homelessness and ensuring that people in the city are not forced into precarious situations simply because they cannot keep up with rising rents or have been unfairly targeted by landlords. While these measures are not the ultimate solution, they are necessary to shield our neighbors from the worst abuses of a system that prioritizes profits over people. I know firsthand how devastating an illegal eviction can be. When I was 19, I became homeless due to an unlawful eviction. My life was turned upside down, of course, and it took years to regain safety and stability. I will live with the trauma from that experience for the rest of my life. This experience is not unique, though, and it's a reality for far too many in our community. With basic legal protections in place for tenants, this might not have been the situation. We must continue to fight for de-commodification of housing and the recognition that every person deserves a safe, stable place to live. Supporting these protections is a vital step in that fight, and I urge you to vote yes on this legislation and the allocation of appropriate funds to support it without hesitation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Lescaris. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
All right, I'm on the Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Yeah, my name is Stephen Lescaris. I am the president of USW Local 9562. We represent 900 workers at the Carnegie Museums of Pittsburgh, the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, HCL, at the Versad Center, and our membership is strongly in support of funding for eviction prevention. We also submitted a letter. We are a member of that coalition that was cited earlier. Our membership know by being renters the difficulties that eviction can cause, and we also know as workers in public service at the libraries how much of a toll eviction takes on our community and how much of a crisis we're in with homelessness right now. So, I just wanted to speak on behalf of our local and say that we hope the council will pass a right to counsel and provide funding for eviction prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Madeline McGrady.
Good morning, Council. My name's Maddie McGrady. I'm a social worker and a program manager with the Human Rights City Alliance, which is also a member of the Housing Justice Table, and I'm a resident and renter in the Highland Park neighborhood. I'm here speaking again just to support Councilwoman Gross's bill to increase funding for eviction prevention and housing support. Access to housing that is safe, stable, and affordable is a human right, and it's our responsibility, including the responsibility of this council, to ensure that right is protected through every means available to us, and this is an opportunity to do that. Housing is health care, it's education and family support, it's employment support, mental health support, crime and violence prevention, and it's foundational to the social and economic future of our city. And as we've seen in cities like Philadelphia, it's a wise investment because prevention costs eight to 12 times less than providing services once housing has already been lost. So, again, I'm just here to reiterate that expanding the dedicated funding for eviction prevention and eventually a right to counsel is an essential investment in our communities and the future of our city. So, please support Councilwoman Gross's bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Spearing.
Hi there, Council. My name is Sam Spearing. I work as the Community Development Manager for Bloomfield Development Corporation, the registered community organization for Bloomfield, and I'm also a renter and resident in Bloomfield as well. I'm speaking today along with other members of the Pittsburgh Housing Justice Table to support Councilwoman Gross's legislation to provide dedicated funding for legal counsel for tenants facing evictions. I want to thank the Councilwomen, as well as the other members of council that have cosponsored, for taking this step forward in supporting and protecting renters in the city of Pittsburgh. The power of the Housing Justice Table as a coalition is in pushing for solutions that serve residents not just in our individual neighborhoods but across the city of Pittsburgh. Too many of our households in Pittsburgh are one missed paycheck or unexpected emergency away from missing rent and facing the threat of eviction. Evictions have devastating consequences for our communities and residents and disproportionately impact black women and children. This legislation presents an opportunity to protect households from the devastating outcomes that eviction can lead to, including homelessness, chronic school absence in children, and even death. By building on the already-successful Law Year of the Day program, City Council has an opportunity to bring representation to tenants who are otherwise left to fend for themselves. Thank you again to Councilwoman Gross for introducing this legislation and to those of you who have cosponsored, and I look forward to its passage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Swain Uber.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Swain Uber, and I'm here to speak also on the Right to Counsel Plus funding for expansion of the Law of the Day program. I'm an attorney with Community Justice Project, and I help coordinate the Law of the Day program for the city. It's our local pilot implementation project and model for a Right to Counsel Plus. Law of the Day is a program that was launched in 2022 with the support of the Legal Assistance Program at the Housing Opportunity Funds, and this expansion would help bring it to most, if not all, of the city. I know I've shared many facts and examples with you all before about the Law of the Day program along with the rest of the Legal Assistance Program that helped keep Pittsburghers home, but I wanted to provide some updated information as those results have actually continued to improve. As of June 21st of this year, the last time we ran the numbers, nearly 80% of the 1,400 cases which our Law of the Day teams have worked on with another several hundred pending have had an outcome favorable to both tenants and landlords in most of those instances. This is a success rate nearly six times higher than when the program is not present and at the pre-COVID norms. In addition to these findings, these interventions have thus far been both effective and sustainable with very few households returning to the legal system again, and those that do have an even a higher rate of success with our assistance. Since 2022, fewer than around two in 10 families return, and 85% of those are resolved favorably again for both parties. As we all know, eviction can be one of the most devastating things that can happen to a family. Nearly everyone we've served through our program, 93%, are households below 50% AMI, and 3/4 of those are female-led households, and over half of them with children identify as single-parent households. These programs also help landlords. As I've said before, evicting a tenant can cost, on average, $5,000 per process, so this really is a win-win-win for everyone. Dozens of people are responsible for the successes of this program, but those successes are not yet experienced throughout the entire city. Last year, there were 321 families in South Oakland and the South Side who didn't receive these supports. In Hazelwood and Greenfield, there were another 145. In East Liberty and Garfield, 290 families went without support. In some of the Hilltop neighborhoods, there were another 299. In the West End neighborhoods, 412 families didn't have these supports, and in Carrick and the other South Hills neighborhoods, there were staggering 614 families that faced eviction and didn't have access to this program. Everyone deserves a better chance to stay in their homes, and this funding would help make sure Pittsburghers are supported while trying to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to anyone in chambers wishing to speak. If there's someone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. My name is Loretta Payne. I'm a Hill District resident, and I am here representing Pittsburgh Human Rights Alliance. I'm going to tell you what happens way before the eviction notice gets there. Lease people who can afford a rent to pay the highest rent in the most dilapidated buildings. Most renting families pay at least half of their income for rent in utilities, and one in four pay over 70% of their income for rent in utilities, and this is unsustainable. And let us remember, there's a lot of people, poor people, above the poverty line, so we're not only talking about people below the poverty line. And unfortunately, churn has become the status quo among some realtors. More than 3.6 million evictions are put on doors every year in the United States. But these combined factors have transformed the United States into where eviction is commonplace. So, Pittsburgh can be a fearless city. Our city can be fearless to be transformative. Our city can be transformative to improve our imagination, and finally dignity and justice for all of us, we all deserve. So, I support Deb Grossman's legislative for representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on to our Standing Committee agenda, beginning with the first committee of the day, which is Finance and Law, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our first supplemental paper is Bill 805.
Bill 805, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, effective December 28, 2017, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018-2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Small Men Street Reconstruction by $35,340.92 and Increasing Complete Streets by $35,340.92."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 806.
Bill 806, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing CBD Signal Upgrades by $250,000 and Increasing Complete Streets by $250,000."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 807.
Bill 807, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Complete Streets by $880,000 to Account for Additional Federal Highway Administration Funding Being Received by the City of Pittsburgh."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Our one deferred paper is Bill 685.
Bill 685, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into An Agreement or Agreements with the County of Allegheny for the Completion of Lead Safety Projects as Approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan Act Allocation at a Cost Not To Exceed $600,000.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman?
Thank you. I know Patrick Cornell is present and anyone else who might want to join him for this.
Cornell, if you would just introduce yourself.
Sure. Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Chief Cornell. I think it would be helpful, because this is something that several councilmembers have been advocating for for several years since the passage of the comprehensive lead safe law and when ARPA funds became available to help with implementation of this. It could be helpful as a recap for everyone on council and the public at large where we are and where these funds will go towards as part of the ARPA allocation.
Sure, happy to do so. The initial ARPA allocation, part of that created the Lead Safety Trust Fund within the city of Pittsburgh. The ARPA dollars were one of those revenue sources that were targeted to go into the fund. We worked diligently with PLI to set up lead safety training for contractors. There was some outside help to offset some of the cost there. PLI has been gearing up for testing materials they've purchased. Their staff has been getting ready for certifications with lead inspection. Obviously, with rental registration in its current, you know, iteration, or the past year, win litigation, that kind of put a pause on the lead safety component of that aspect, so we were not able to tap into those funds as we had planned to do so. So, one of the ideas that we had was to partner with the county who has a more robust lead program, and in particular, the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development is working with the federal department, excuse me, Housing and Urban Development. It's been a while since we've been at the table. I'm a little rusty. For their new grant program for $7 million, so we are looking to commit some financial support to that program for work to occur within the city boundaries. This would be a direct, a direct cost that would pay for lead inspection and actual risk assessment, mitigation, temporary relocation services, and hazard control. We have had conversations with some of our lead safety advocates, with Councilperson Strasburger leading the charge here, and I know there were a lot of ideas about what we could spend these funds on, but we think with ARPA in particular, working with the county on this program is perhaps the best pivot, and we hope that we are able to continue the partnership with them. We've given money to this program in the past. The last time we did that was 2016, but we hope this additional allocation will allow us to move forward with the ARPA dollars and then look to other funding sources as we move forward with lead safety initiatives.
Thanks very much. I think that's a helpful primer for everybody. I have no further questions or other councilmembers have comments or questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, yes. And thank you to Councilwoman Strasburger, and we did get the email, and she bumped it again for us, and I didn't ask her this question by emails. I apologize, so I'll ask it here at the table. How will the county be targeting those inspections? And how many do we expect to see? And I'll preface that by saying that, as a reminder to the public, as you touched upon, Patrick, that because of 15 years of court proceedings over rental registry, and most recently since we've passed the lead inspection program, that we're not able to do inspections, right, because of this court battle that we've been dragged through. And that means we're not proactively preventing lead paint exposure. And so, because we're not proactively doing inspections, the only thing that has been happening is that after a child has been detected with lead poisoning, the county then inspects their living situation to see where the source of that lead exposure is, right? And so, is there any ability here for us to do proactive inspections, or are these just going to be more reactive inspections?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer right now. There are several components at the county level also. You know, this program through economic development, I believe, is, you know, a group would have to apply for it. I imagine that the reactive side is through the Health Department, but I can confirm and get back to you. But we certainly can, as a city, help market and push, you know, if this moves through, applications into the program.
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, I know that, you know, this is kind of a new thing that we're trying, so I would just kind of urge us, thank you, to do that, to try to find some way that we're not just waiting until after a child is poisoned. So, but, so, anything is helpful. So, this is one small step, but at least we're taking some step in a proactive direction, I hope. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Councilwoman Sharland?
Just briefly, Chief Cornell, I noticed in, this isn't related to this bill, actually. It's the last three bills. We moved money towards complete streets, and I probably should have asked at the time, why did we move that money? Is there a project coming, or is Councilwoman Warwick thinks maybe that there might be matching funds that we're applying for? What was the rationale for it?
Sure. So, those three bills, happy to answer that. Those three bills are specifically related to the North Avenue project. Two more bills will come up in Councilmember Warwick's committee today to authorize the actual construction of that, but to jump ahead of ourselves, the federal government has been willing to put in more money for that, so we had to find an additional local match, and that was moving the budget around for those.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, just really quickly back on the lead bill. I couldn't agree more with Councilwoman Gross's comments, and, you know, I think what's, the hard part about ARPA funds is that they're, they're, we're on the clock. We have to, we have to obligate them and allocate them by a certain date. So, I guess I also, you know, I'm really, really, really hoping that we can get going on implementation of the rental registration program with lead inspections, because the beauty of that is it doesn't cost additional funds. We've already trained up our inspectors to be lead safe certified, so, you know, when it comes to expenditure of funds, I too have the same questions about the county program and want to make sure that it's additive for the city and not just all of the county, which we know, you know, the numbers will be, but at what point are they inspecting? But once we get going on rental registration, we can, and inspector lead, you know, that really won't actually need ARPA funds or additional funds, you know, we have inspectors for that. So, I just wanted to have that get in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, beginning with 770.
Bill 770, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II, Fiscal, Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, for the purpose of dedicating a portion of the fund to support the city of Pittsburgh's ongoing work to provide legal counsel for tenants facing evictions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to the very many people who've come today, who've been working on this program for so long and have been demonstrating its effectiveness in the city now for, I think, four years. I think I've already forgotten my talking points from our press conference two years. Thank you, thank you, for two years. As a reminder, this program has been operating in four magisterial districts in the city and has shown incredible effectiveness in preventing evictions and also kind of helping us keep people housing stable, right? As we heard in public testimony, we know that it's in our poorest neighborhoods, and especially in our female-headed households in those poorest neighborhoods where we see the highest number of evictions, and it's for the common good and for our city's health to bring that number down and to help slow that eviction rate, so that we have kids who are more stable of their housing, which means they can complete their school year or stay in one school for a year. We have kids in our city that are switching schools multiple times in a year because they're getting evicted repeatedly. So, I really want to appreciate all of the council cosponsors as well, and this is, just, I think, speaks to what a great program this is, and putting the funds here to expand it across the city means we'll just be able to help more of our households. Having said that, this motion is, I have a clarifying language that I just handed, you might have noticed, at the beginning of the meeting. It just cleans up under Section D of our amendments, the language a little bit. There was some redundancy in the language in Section 2, and it just kind of, it's a technical amendment for, well, it is just a cleaner language for bullet point number one. How do I make this motion?
You want to make a verbal amendment? Is it that simple?
Yeah, it's more like one and a half sentences, so it's more like a strike through. So, I have it in writing, and I can just hand it around, but I wasn't, it's not on yellow paper, because we were having printer problems in the back room. Louise, you want to help me? So, yeah, so I just amend, I just motion to amend.
Yeah.
This one.
Second.
Thank you. Second, thank you. There's a second, but a member should see it before we vote, so. I'll read it out loud, too. Let me keep one copy then. I think, is that it? No, there we go. Thank you. So, even though we're all voting on the amendment that's in front of us, it will now read, "It is the intention of the city council that the funds for eviction prevention be used exclusively for the following purposes," and then, so the new language is just under one. You can see it bolded, "providing landlord/tenant mediation and related services for tenants facing housing instability." And that is more appropriately what the program has been doing for these two years. And then, the second item, number two, it really is just a kind of cleaning up the grammar. There was just a little redundancy in the first part of that sentence, so it'll read, "Resource navigation for access to services, including but not limited to rental assistance for tenants facing housing instability or eviction proceedings." And the rest of it stays the same.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the bill has been amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all for being here with us. That takes us to Bill 776.
Bill 77- Bill 776, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Director of the Department of Finance to Limit Eligibility for the Acquisition of Properties Through the City's Sideyard Sale Program to Residents Who Own and Occupy Property That Directly Abuts the Vacant Lot That Is to Be Disposed.
Motion approved.
Second discussion?
Second discussion. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I'm just curious to know more about this bill. I have some concerns initially, you know, reading the title and looking at the bill. So, I'm happy to talk about the concerns, but I'd appreciate, like, we could, I could state them now, but also if we could hold for a week, so maybe we could work through this.
I'd like to bring the director to the table. Thank you. Director Gulliver? Give the floor.
Councilwoman Wilson, you still have the floor.
Okay, so this is started out of an idea from, well, I guess you got to state your name and everything.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I'm Jennifer Gulliver, I'm the Finance Director and City Treasurer.
This is coming from you, because I see this is the sponsor, was Councilwoman.
It is, she is sponsoring the bill. This is something that we've actually been discussing in our department for quite some time. We have had issues in the past with, well, let's give some background of what the current program is. So, the current program allows a property owner to purchase an abutting city vacant lot for $200, as long as the lot is within 5,000 square feet in size. And it also limits the number of people that can actually object to the sale to other abutting property owners. So, $200 is an extremely discounted price, and the city does not make any money on any of these sales. We actually lose money. It costs us over $500 just to file a quiet title. So, what's been happening that we've noticed is that the property owners don't necessarily occupy the property. They could be people that own rentals and purchase, you know, the lot next door, and even though the lot comes with deed restrictions as part of the sideyard program, there's only certain amount of changes they can make to it. They can't, you know, erect another housing structure on the property, they're limited to, like, decks and swimming pools, gardens, just a mowed lawn, extension of their lawn. Sometimes deed restrictions don't always work. I mean, they're in there, but people that are crafty could remove them, and sometimes they do what they want to. And we're not always aware, because we do have the ability to take the property back, but we don't always get to do that. So, we wanted to make sure that, especially because we lose money, so it's a considerable discount, that the people that are eligible for that discount be city residents, and be the owners and occupants of the parcel that they're purchasing from us. It doesn't exclude anyone else from buying the property. They can definitely apply to purchase the property, but they would just pay full price for it. They're just not eligible for basically a city stipend, so. Does that help explain?
Well, you explained the program, and then you're saying that, but what are you saying, though? You're saying that you think that...
We feel that it should be...
People who don't live in the property...
Should not be eligible to purchase the lot for $200.
So, you're talking about landlords?
Yes.
Okay. So, do, well, I mean, regardless, like, right now, does anyone who buys that property, are they paying taxes on that property?
They do pay taxes.
They're paying taxes on the property?
Mm-hmm.
So, that is additional revenue that we will see in the future. And currently, if the property is just vacant, then who's maintaining that?
We are.
Okay, we are, and we have very limited resources.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm trying to understand what, you understand that there's this perception that a landlord has money, and so then, you know, we should charge them full price, but we're also concerned about displacement. So, wouldn't that increase the price of, you know, possibly what they would charge for rent, if they were paying full price for a property? And also, just in general, if they were to cut the grass next to it, don't we want that to take place? Don't we want renters to also be able to not live next to an abandoned property? Don't we want them maybe to have a side yard? I'm trying to understand why we would go down this path.
I mean, I'm not trying to, what seems to be happening is not necessarily renters, a lot of this, too, comes from speculators. We get a lot of applications even from speculators.
So, the landlord's a speculator?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, I'm trying to understand.
I'm just saying, I think that we feel that people entitled should be able to, it's, they could still buy the property, like, a landlord could still purchase the property next to it.
For full price, though.
For full price, right.
But they're dealing with, probably, they're like, hey, this, I don't know, I'm not the one that's coordinating the whole, you know, side yard sale, but I would imagine if I owned a property, and right next door it's just overgrown, I'm like, well, I'm cutting it, you know, we're already paying to get it cut, why not have some ownership of it so that if there is trash on it, if there is some sort of, someone could be held accountable and said, we're left holding the bag, like, with the city still? I don't know, I just think this is, this is, there could be, there should be an increase price in general, you know, for even, you know, $200, we're not making anything. So, that price is an old price, that should be increased, just in general, probably. So, we should reevaluate that, but I'm really hesitant to support the initial bill the way it's currently written, because I'm not seeing why that would be good for Pittsburgh and Pittsburghers.
I think, too, at the time when we actually had the side yard, when we implemented the side yard program, it was a bit different. We do, times are a little different, especially with the, with the land bank actually being able to purchase property, and they're very active now. We are moving properties very quickly.
That's great.
Through, it's amazing. And so, I think at the time when we actually implemented this program, we wanted to give away, give away as much property as we possibly could, to get it out and to keep us from spending money and have it go down this black hole, and not, and still have and accumulate more and more and more property that we can take care of. I think now is a time where we have the ability to be a little more selective, and yes, maybe the cost needs to come up some, but I think that people that do live next door to an abandoned lot should have more consideration over a landlord potentially that owns and doesn't live there, or a speculator from another state that buys property in our city, and although they, yes, they do pay taxes, but I feel like the person that lives in the property that actually abuts should have higher consideration of...
So, maybe I'm wildly off base with this, maybe I'm wildly off base with this. So, you're saying that just in the, in the, in the algorithm that you're using, that if someone, so, a non-occupant could still apply for it?
They could still apply for it, and they could still purchase it.
Yeah, yeah, but it would be higher than 200?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where I'm, so you're changing that rule. I thought, maybe you're insinuating, just as you were answering the question.
No.
You were explaining that they would just be, you know, like, the occupant next door, so if there's house here, house here, and in the middle there's that vacant property?
Right.
That there's an occupant, non-occupant, that this one would be able to get it before this person could get it?
They still have, that person can object to the sale, so it limits, so if you have a property, say you have four homeowners that abut a property, all of those homeowners could apply to purchase through the sideyard program the same piece, the same parcel. It won't allow other people that don't abut the property to, it gives them the right to purchase the property as long as they abut. Anyone else could apply to purchase the property, they just don't get a discounted amount. They get, the first consideration goes to the people that live and occupy the areas that abut that vacant lot. And they get, they have the opportunity then to purchase it at a drastically discounted amount. Anyone else can definitely apply to purchase any piece of property as long, but they would just pay, they wouldn't have the opportunity to buy it for $200. They just have to pay whatever we set the price to be, based on comparables, right?
Okay.
So, it doesn't preclude anyone from purchasing anything.
Right, so I'm still, I'm still accurate the way I'm thinking of it, that you just want to take away the ability for that owner to purchase the property next to it, if they don't live there?
Right.
For the $200 price?
Yes.
I'd just like to think more comprehensively about this. I mean, the cost that we spend to clean the property, and we have no one accountable other than ourself, you know, like I said, the system probably should have a, just a, it's a, it's a program that's probably, I don't know, it was, happened before I was here, was it a decade?
It was actually, Councilman Charlin, it was Councilman Kraus's program, it's, yeah, it's been in place for a long time.
So, I think it probably just needs a good look in general, especially with the land bank being up and operating, you know, I'd appreciate, like, a...
So, I can tell you that overall, I guess, when we started sort of re, like, overhauling this whole sales process and all of 3TB, there was a huge backlog, and I think in the beginning you started seeing large numbers of sales coming through, and a lot of them were side yards. That number has drastically reduced. So, I think it was sort of overwhelming, because there was such a backlog of things to move through. So, we are doing more standard sales for full-priced properties, and, you know, transferring to the PLB for them to dispose of our properties. So, it's not as high volume as it used to be, but, like, I, I think it's still important to use, to have a tool, to be able to, the people that live next to a vacant lot and occupy a structure next to a vacant lot, to be able to take that over easily, and maintain it, and expand their yard, and do some things like that. Not necessarily to build, but to keep the green space.
Councilman, Councilman Charlin?
Yeah, I share Councilman Wilson's concern here, that, you know, I want to level set here. My district is well over 60% rentals, so that means well over 60% landlords, meaning that, you know, so much of my property is owned by people that were trying to now stop from, from activating through the, acquiring land through the side lot program. So, I personally don't have a problem with the landlords acquiring property next to them and getting that off of our responsibility. And, you know, in having a program like this that can act as an incentive to get those landlords to purchase that property, have tenants have more space to put a community gar, or, not a community, a personal garden, or whatever, you know, on their lot. And most importantly, because my, you know, I know that we have worked to move properties from city ownership to private ownership, and have, have worked, you know, to move that vast citywide, it still isn't happening in my district. I have, still have an unbelievable amount of vacant land, and, you know, and I say this in community meetings, and I say this to all of you here, is that, that, you know, the city does not do a good job maintaining its land. I've got overgrown lots left and right, it's, we are, the city is a bad landlord. So, anything we can do to get the property into someone else's hands who can maintain it, and stop paying the cost, and my office stop receiving the phone calls about why has, hasn't this grass been cut, I'm supportive of. If there was a world, and I understand, you know, we look at citywide policies, and there's different parts of the city where people are gobbling up land left and right, that's not happening in my district. Grass is growing left and right in my district, and, you know, so, I, I don't see the problem that this is trying to solve as a problem, and I think the consequences of doing this are more than, than it's worth. So, unless somebody can explain to me otherwise, I don't think I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cargill?
Thank you. Hello.
Hello, good morning. Bye.
So, let me just start with a couple small questions. I have deed restrictions. Deed restrictions to the property owner who abuts it, is that where the deed restrictions come in?
The deed restriction is built into the deed, and so, it actually, so if we sell something as part of the sideyard program, it comes with restrictions that perm, this allows any, like, single-family structure or extension...
So, if I, I'm sorry, I mean, so if I buy a side lot for $200, I can't build?
No.
Okay, why?
Because we wanted to, first of all, we're selling it for $200, right? So, and second, some of them, well, it's a lot that's 5,000 square feet or less or under, so some of them may not even reach 500 square feet, and the buildable lot, and they may not be buildable in general.
Considering the lot is big enough to build.
Right. No, that was not the intent of the program, it was the intent to allow an abutting property owner to expand their green space and their yard, to build a garden.
And I love that, I, I love, I absolutely love.
And that was all. And it's not saying that you can't buy the property, you can buy the property.
So, the $200, you're not buying the property, then?
You're buying the property, but it also comes with a...
With deed restrictions.
With deed restrictions, right.
So, so if I want to build there, and if it's big enough to build, I could come and pay the full price and then build?
Yes, you can.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Understood. So, if you have property that's abutting, and you have two people interested in it, they can split it?
It...
I mean, two adjoining, if there's only two?
That would be up to them.
Yeah.
But on our end, what we would do would be to consider if the other person, we deemed a qualified buyer, which means if they met the qualifications to purchase property through the city in general, then it would actually go to auction, it would go to highest bidder. So, it could potentially go over $200 if there were two abutting property owners.
Okay, so they can bid against each other?
They would bid against each other.
Or they could come to an agreement and split it?
And one, that would be on them.
They would pay $100 apiece?
They could, we would sell to one person, and whatever they work down on their end would be, you know, would be up to them, whether they decided to subdivide it and then sell the other person apart.
So, if I bought a side lot, and somebody, and I wanted to sell it to somebody who wanted to build, is that allowed?
The deed restriction should follow the deed, and they would not be allowed to build on the property.
So, nobody can build on that property, then?
Nope.
Ever?
Nope.
That kind of flies in the faces to, you know, you know, available lots and space that we have in the city, but, hmm, okay, so, so we get it back on the tax rules for what, the $200, or are they paying taxes on the assessed value?
They pay the tax on the assessed value.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. And you said we could take it back?
We're suppo, in every deed that the city owns, we have deed restrictions. There are what they call reverter clauses, which, in any sale, I think they're not allowed to apply for any type of, you know, tax exemption. So, if a community group purchased a lot, and they wanted to make the lot tax exempt, they're not allowed to for a certain number of years. If they do not pay taxes on it, we obviously can take that back, and through the T-Sale process, and there's a bunch of other requirements that if they don't, you know, comply with, that we are allowed to actually assume ownership of the property.
Can they put a driveway in?
They, they can, I believe, as long as it's zoned properly. They can build a, they can have a shed, so it can't be something that would be a single-family dwelling, or like, an extension of their home that would be occupiable. So, but they could build a shed, they could build a deck, they could install a pool, you know, they... You know, they, there's a number of things that they can do.
I understand, but they can't build?
They can't build, nope.
So are we selling, we do not sell paper streets or side paper streets or right-ofways, is that right? It has to be a lot.
We do not.
If I live next to a paper street, can I buy it?
As long as, that's a little more complicated, that's a little more complicated. And rights-of-way are actually, even though the finance department or the property owners, um, rights-of-way actually fall under domes purview. So if it is a right-of-way that they don't use anymore as a right-of-way, I mean, we would have to reach out to them and see. Yeah, it would, it would require us communicating with them to see if there was a, a plan or if there is a reason why we needed it. And then potentially, I don't say that it's like a, it would be a one-off basis that would have to be looked at in order to determine if we would release something like that.
So if I were the owner of a property next to a side street, it would come to Domey or you?
You would ask, first of all, it's permanent city ownership, it should be, right? So it would require Domey, it would come to us first as the landlords and then we would have to engage Domey in order to release.
Have you sold, uh, paper streets or, I call them paper streets or right-ofways like that?
We've sold property that, no.
No, no.
No. And I think in one instance that we did, it wasn't supposed to happen, so.
So if I wanted to buy a paper street, I would come to you and you'd analyze it and tell me if it's doable, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And normally, so only properties that are available for sale are actually listed in the city's website for the public to see. Going forward, a lot of times we get inquiries because people look at things online and see that the city owns it. But it doesn't necessarily mean that it's something that we're willing to sell.
Okay, so that's an inner department. You, if, if I come to you and I say I want to buy the side street, you'll look at it and decide and get back to me, is that right?
Yes.
If it's doable.
If it's doable.
But you have no record, nobody's ever done it, you mean?
I mean, I'm sure they have, I can't think of an instance on the top of my head, but-
That's fine. I, I just wanted to get an idea if, if it's doable, has it been done? Um, it's not the norm.
It's not the norm, no.
Okay. Okay, so, um, back to the subject at hand, we're going to restrict landlords from buying side lots.
We're gonna-
It's the $200. You have to be the property owner.
You have to be, it, the pro- you have to be the occupant and owner of the property, yes. It has to be owner-occupied structure in order to purchase the side lot at $200.
Yeah. I mean, just because you're a landlord, I, I understand that, I think the reason behind this is because we're, everybody's LLCs are gobbling everything up, correct? Is that why we're restricting landlords?
Yes and no, yes and no, right. The, the other, and, I mean, it's just that it also costs the city a lot of money. Like, we lose money on every side yard sale.
Can't we raise the price?
We can, but then you have, like, do you, if you raise the price, you might also restrict who buys it and who doesn't. So we're already asking, which we didn't before, so we ask a person also to purchase, um, their title report. So as part of the side yard program in the past, it was $200 and that was it. We covered every other cost. We paid for the title report.
Wait, we shouldn't be doing that. I mean, why are we not drinking the fresh?
No, we do now. We did, so we made a change to where now it's $200 plus any of the closing costs. And then they are responsible for getting us a title report, which could be like 400 bucks. So
It might cost them a thousand bucks now then.
Right.
So there are other expenses over there.
Right. So if you raise now the cost to somebody, right?
$1,500, okay, okay. I love making them available. Uh, I do not think we should restrict landlords from buying them. I think that's sing- signaling out a, you know, a party that, uh, I don't quite understand why we would do it. I understand the benefits of living and owning the place next to it. You're there, you'll take care of it. But there's, who's to say a landlord's not going to take care of it and make a garden or an orchard or something like that, right?
Just to clarify, we're not restricting landlords from purchasing the property at all.
Right.
We're just restricting them from getting it for $200, right. They can purchase it, they can apply and purchase a property. And if they do it that way, it actually comes with no deed restrictions.
So if I buy a lot for 200 bucks that I had bought too, and some LLC wants to buy that property, is it for sale still?
It's for sale.
So they would come to the city and then you can revoke my 200, my, my ownership of it?
Whoever, you can, they could, if a sale starts initially as a side yard and it's an abutting property owner, it limits who can object to the sale. So if they are not an additional abutting property owner, they can't object to the sale.
Understood.
However, if said landlord buys or starts a sale with the city first as a standard sale, then anyone else, including other abutting property owners, can then object to that sale as well.
So I, I, maybe, what I'm asking is if I buy the $200 space, okay? And some LLC wants to purchase that, they say, oh, I want to build a house there or whatever, right? They can come to me as the owner or, I guess, owner with restrictions and buy that property from me or, right? Is that right?
If we, if we sold it to you, if we sold it to you, you can sell to whoever.
$200 side lot for $20,000 if I went to some LLC if I wanted to.
If you wanted to, yeah.
Right. Okay.
But there are restrictions in the deed that would keep them from developing it. When we sold it to you, when we, you came to me-
So the restrictions stay forever.
They, they should stay forever.
They stay forever. So why would anyone want to buy it then, I guess, if, to build? So, so we're, which is a good thing, restricting these LLCs from gobbling up every little piece of land. I agree with that. I, I don't think we, we should be, it, it should be to the landlords too, they own the property. So, um, uh, yeah, I can't, I agree with Councilman Wilson and Charlotte. Uh, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea. I feel like we're, you know, playing favorites, that's all. Okay, that's it. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Warwick.
Thanks, Director. So I may be repeating some questions, apologies.
Sure, that, that's okay.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so with the side yard, if, if someone applies to buy something through the side yard program and I do not abut the property, I cannot object?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so if I do abut the property, I can object? And then the $200, then we go into a bidding and the $200 price is out the window?
Yep, but it would start at $200.
It would start at $200. But, but would the side yard restrictions remain in that case?
Honestly, that's a good question and one that I can't honestly remember if they do or they don't. Cause I don't know if it would go to like a standard sale or not, but I, I think the intent is that they would.
Okay. So, I mean, if I'm, if I'm understanding the, the spirit of, of, it's that to, so I mean, would there be a way, you know, if we sort of talk, you know, worked on this a little bit longer, to, in that case, right, where you had abutting property owners and one is the owner occupied and the other is a landlord who's like a business, you know, whatever, it's like their business, to somehow prioritize the hu- the, I shouldn't say home, I guess the homeowner in that case. But if there isn't a homeowner and it's just a landlord or it's two landlords or, or whatever, or I guess two landlords would, you'd go into the bidding war anyway. You know, just, if, if it's just one landlord and no one else is interested or no one else who's abutting because they're doing it through the side yard program, then let, let them, I mean, you know, let them proceed.
So you, so your intent is just to, to make sure that the objectors, if they are abutting property owners, are also owner occupied, correct?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that if, if, I mean, again, this would be like, but if, if there were, if, if you had two people and one of them was a landlord, whether that be an LLC or whatever, right? One of them is not living there and the other one is living there, um, give priority to the person living there. And then also I'm wondering too, just sort of thinking out loud, if there wouldn't also be a level of priority to whoever's been taking care of it?
So-
I, that's a little trickier, I know. That's hard. Cause I, I actually have two people who are both taking care of it.
And, look-
Dueling care of a property.
And you're, you all are not going to like me for saying this, but legally, legally, anyone that is actually on city property, even though we've been landlord, bad landlords and they're taking care of it, is actually trespassing.
Okay, we'll scratch that part then. So, okay, so, um, and then, um, okay, so that was my other question, right? Does the, if we, if we go into a bidding war, does the $200 pri- does, does the whole side yard issue remain with, with the deed restrictions? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, and the program was meant, look, we had, the program was built out of, we had a lot of people that did do just that, right? They were taking care of a lot next door to them and all they wanted was to be able to continue to take care of the lot that was next door to them and expand their yard or put their garden. And this program was made and built for those people. It was never intended to allow people to suck up city lots for 200 bucks and build stuff on them. That's never its intention. The intent of the program was to leave it as green space and allow the people that live next to it to operate it still as green space like they had been. And so we want that to continue. Now, whether it's a buildable lot or not is fine and somebody could definitely apply to purchase it and build something on it as long as it was within zoning code and they, you know, did their research and know that that's true. And they buy it from the city as a standard sale where we would price it, like we price everything else and move it out the door. We don't want them to have the opportunity for us to expend money to give it to them for $200 and to allow them to continually lease it while we're going through the sales process so that they can continue to cut the yard and contin- continue to tend to their garden. We don't want people that don't live there to be able to have that opportunity for, for money. It's $200 they're giving us, but we're actually expending a lot more. So, in order to be able to provide that to them. If that makes sense. So, but anybody else can willingly purchase any lot we have and have the free will to do what they want to as long as it's within code with no deed restrictions, but they just get to have a standard sale and pay regular price for it, just like everything else. So.
Thanks, that's, I think that's it for me.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Gross.
Thank you. Um, so I, um, I think it's great to have this robust kind of revisiting of the side yard sales. Uh, and I didn't realize, and so I apologize to members, I didn't realize there would be so much confusion about the program because it's just been around for so long, I thought we all kind of like understood the basics of it. Um, and so, um, as the director said, um, it's really motivated by the fact that we've had so much more speculators, right? Even though I think this is a, a good and legitimate question about, um, where are landlords and how does, you know, what, what are the options for them? That we know LLCs are buying property all over the city, um, that we know that there is actually a market for lots. Um, whereas I think when this program was put in place for many years, you know, these lots had actually gone to auction and, and no one had bought them. Right? So that's a reminder of what our inventory is. They were unwanted. No one in the world wanted them. And that is, and we're not in that place now. We're in a very, very different place. Um, so having resident homeowners or, or being able to acquire a side lot, especially when so much of our city, so much of my district and certainly council members districts here too are, you know, I have, I have city lots that are 15 feet wide. I think I might actually have a few that are 12. Right? So people are really in very, very tight situations. They absolutely have no yard at all. Some of those lots are only something like 85 or 95 feet deep. Um, and so the side lot program was, was great, right, for those homeowners. And that was really, I think, the spirit and the intent of council creating this. Um, and so for it to have kind of gone astray by having now a kind of remote even purchasing, right, people from Florida or Georgia or LLCs then buying up properties and then being like, oh, and hey, now I'm entitled to the lot next door for 200 bucks is not the intent. Right? And so that was the spirit of, of this amendment. So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I think maybe Council President actually has some comments too, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, um, one, I just kind of wanted to get some context of the, the program overall. Do you have a sense, you know, and I hate to put you on the spot and ask you for numbers, but do you have a sense of like, on an annual basis, how many applications uh, for side yards the city receives?
Um, not off the top of my head, but I definitely can supply you with that, yeah.
Cause I, I know just from my experience over the past year, I know there's been probably several dozen in my district and I do know of only one that was, you know, a landlord. So I'd be really interested to to see some type of matrix that compares the amount of applications from owner occupants, you know, versus, um, you know, landlords, um, you know, on, on an annual basis or even, you know, over the last, uh, 12 months in the city. So we can really get a sense to understand of, you know, how many owner occupants are applying for these lots and how many, um, landlords are, are applying, um, you know, for, for these lots. Um, and, and I think one thing that we could think about, cause, you know, I really, you know, support the spirit as a co-sponsor, I support, you know, the spirit of giving, you know, longtime owner occupants opportunities, you know, to, to take over, um, you know, empty lots and, but I also, um, have a lot of appreciation for the concerns from Councilman Wilson, Councilman Cockhill and, and councilman Charlotte around, um, you know, not, you know, um, putting landlords and renters in, 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 in a separate situation. Cause obviously, you know, renters also, you know, would love to have a lot. You know, even if they're, you know, renting an apartment for one year, two years or, you know, it could be a long time renter. Um, you know, add a dome of style to have an orchard or a garden next to that would be a nice amenity. Um, you know, and I don't, you know, want to, you know, participate in any sort of kind of trench warfare between owner occupants, um, and landlords, because I know that, you know, we are all stakeholders, you know, in a larger ecosystem, you know, to, to create, you know, housing options for, you know, variety of Pittsburghers regardless of what, you know, um, their preference is. But I would really be, you know, interested in, in even taking a deeper dive into, you know, understanding the delineation of, of different types, you know, of landlords, you know, the landlords that have, you know, consistent, you know, renters that are consistently, you know, living, you know, in, in a space as opposed to, you know, what Councilman Gross has alluded to, someone who bought a building in Florida, no one's living in it, you know, there's no renters, there's no occupants in the building and then applying, you know, for the side yard, you know, program, you know, which I think is a lot different than maybe, you know, someone in, in council in Charlotte's district in Beltsuver who has like a three-bedroom apartment where people have been living there for 15 years. Um, you know, um, you know, have folks been cycling through on their, on their leases and lived there and and a, and a side yard would be a nice amenity, you know, for that three-bedroom apartment. Um, you know, for them to, you know, to sell their, you know, not sell their property, but, but sell that apartment, you know, to a, a to a prospective renter, you know, I, I totally, you know, um, you know, I understand that, but also I think a Councilwoman Gross, you know, raises, I think, an important concern of also, you know, opening up, you know, this program, you know, to someone in Florida, you know, who doesn't have any renters, who's maybe merely just sitting on a property uh, for years and years and keeping it empty and then acquiring, you know, um, you know, that side yard. So I think it may, makes sense for us to even just do a deeper dive and, you know, um, when we talk about landlords and, you know, and, and folks who, like non, like folks who are not living in the property, uh, you know, I think it's important to delineate, you know, cause I think the folks that, that councilperson Cockhill, Wilson and Charlotte are talking about are a lot different than that person in Texas or California than that person in Texas or California who's purchasing a property in Homewood and sitting on it for 20 years and then trying to acquire, you know, the side lot as well. So I think those are, you know, some of the things that, 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 um, that we should explore as we kind of take a deep, a deeper dive into this and how we, you know, create a program, you know, that, that's equitable, but also, um, you know, supports all the various stakeholders, you know, in, in our, on our ecosystem, because it's not just, you know, uh, homeowners who, who make up our ecosystem. It's also renters and those who provide rental properties as well.
Thank you. Uh, before.
Next, next round.
Okay. Before going to the second round, I'll simply say, one, I'm supportive. Um, for me, I think we're making this much bigger than what it is. This is really a bill to clarify the original intent of the side yard program. Like, it's really no more than that. Um, to Councilman Mosley's sort of last conversation about the homeowner, the, the landlord in Beltsuver who lives there and has the three-bedroom apartment, I would actually argue, one, they still can purchase that lot. I would actually argue, given where we are in today's ecosystem, coming through the land bank would actually be the better intent. Um, because then we'd be able to vet and say, yes, this actually makes a whole lot of sense for this individual who lives in Beltsuver, who wants to maintain this lot further, for the building that they acquire. Yes, we can, we can certainly move that property, as opposed to doing it through the side yard program. Um, and so again, I, I think this really just clarifies the intent. It also doesn't stop anyone who wants to acquire city property from putting in an application to be able to do so. Um, what it does do, however, is stop what we do see across the city, um, which is a larger level of speculation. And it's not, I understand Councilman Charlotte's concern, but it's not simply, oh, someone wants to acquire this property and they're going to maintain it. I can, we can get on a map, and I could probably map it out for you, to show you how many properties across our city are now being acquired, now being purchased, and they're literally just being sat there. And now the weeds are growing. They're not maintaining those lots. I can show you how many cleaning liens we put in every single year for the city to have to go clean up private property that has been acquired, um, from, off of the city. And so that, just because someone's willing to acquire it, doesn't mean they're going to be good steward of it either. And so, bringing those properties through the land banks would allow for a heval, a higher level of vetting to ensure that what you're suggesting would occur, Councilman Charlotte, actually occurs, and that we could vet to ensure there are going to be good stewards of our land. Um, but again, if members need a week to hold and better wrap our minds around this, so be it. But I think this is really just about clarifying the original intent of the side yard program. Uh, second round, uh, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. I mean, I, I guess I see this as an opportunity since if it wasn't the original intent, but then we, um, you know, sometimes, some things, some great things start that way where it's not the original intent, but, um, you know, then we have a good landlord that buys the property and cuts the grass, and I'm not sure why. You know, um, I understand it was, you're talking about speculation and stuff, but, I mean, there's a deed restriction on it, so I'm not sure why we care so much who cuts the grass, as long as it's not us. So, yeah, I mean, it would be good to get a better handle on everything we're talking about, like some numbers behind it. I appreciate you bringing that up. I really like the, I, I wish we would just start there on what, uh, councilmember Warwick mentioned about how they, you know, almost the, the owner occupied would get right of first refusal in the, in the, and there wouldn't be this bidding between, you know, to start there, um, so that there, there wouldn't be this bidding that happens between, you know, a landlord or a property owner and the owner occupied, that the owner occupied would have, uh, right of first refusal, basically. But you're saying that's not the case.
In general, or as part of the side yard?
Part of the side yard program.
I think, in gen, so I think we have to also a little, be a little careful. Um, a lot of what we do is determined by the PA State Treasure Sale Act. So, I don't know if that is an issue with giving someone, um, if there's more than one bidder on a property, allowing someone to get preferential treatment. If we're going to allow anyone to be able to bid, I think we have to restrict either who's able to bid in general or allow everyone overall. So as part of the program, anyone that abuts the property can bid, and we're not restricting anyone that abuts the property from bidding or getting the ability over another to actually have it, right? In general, when we do a standard sale, anybody that's able, a qualified bidder, they all have to qualify, so it means you can't owe the city money. You have no PLI violations, that kind of thing, that we allow all. So, does that, I'm not sure that I know this clarified anything for you.
Maybe I didn't reiterate what, what, uh, councilwork. We have, um, interrogatory, like, did, did I convey what you were suggesting?
Yeah, I mean, I was just, so like, so we're not clear, so it wasn't clear, so if you have two, you have two people who are, you know, competing for the property. I think what's unclear is, does the deed restriction stay? So, so now it's no longer part of the side yard program, right? Like, they, they bid on it.
It can be if they're, so if.
No, I was just saying, sorry, I wasn't even going to that point. I was just talking about just.
In general.
Just in general, like, like, um, the current program is there could be a bid, right? If there's non-owner occup, whatever landlord and occupant.
Right, so, so if you have like a side, so you have two, you have a landlord and an occupant that are interested in the $200 property.
Yeah.
And you just give it to the occupant because they're an occupant and not the landlord.
That's what I'm talking about, like, I think that's a good place to start.
I think what would happen under the side yard program is that the objector that, the property owner of the abutting parcel that is not the initial purchaser would also have to be owner occupied in order for it to be still considered a side yard purchase. And then they would bid against each other as to who would get and own the property, and the deed restrictions would stay just the same as they were as part of the side yard program. There are two owners, they abut it, they both want it to be able to expand their yard, and that's how that would work. If it were an abutting property owner, but they, and we started a s- side yard sale with a person that was owner occupied, then it would, this person would not be allowed to object, I would think. If, because they are not an owner occupied structure that abuts. If, okay, if they still wanted to object, we would have to then make it a standard sale between two property owners, which means neither one gets it for $200, and there are no deed restrictions, and it goes to the highest bidder.
But if there's a landlord, so just in the case of like Councilman Charlotte's example, if there's a landlord who wants it for a side yard, for a deed restricted side yard.
But they don't occupy the structure.
But they don't occupy, but nobody's objecting. Like, there's no home, there's no owner who's living next door who's like, no, I want that, it's just nobody wants it, right? Like, nobody's objecting.
Then they still, they, and the landlord wants it, then we don't start a side yard sale, we start a standard sale.
But that's what Councilman Wilson is saying, is why are we penal, if no one else wants it, why are we penalizing the landlord who just wants to keep it? Because it would be deed restricted. I, I'm just trying to, I'm not saying one way, I'm just.
So a standard, if we do a standard sale, there are no deed restrictions. It comes with, the only restrictions in it are the standard reverter clauses in every single city deed that we issue. But they could do whatever they wanted to with the property. So, as.
But, uh, just for, so, so, but, again, I, I don't, I mean, maybe I should let Councilman Wilson make his own argument, but it's like they.
I mean, not because of you, I'm just like, I, I thought it was simple, I thought, I thought it was simple, what we were saying, just give, give them, you know, if, if the program was changed, that they have the opportunity to buy it before the landlord.
But isn't that what we're doing? That's exactly what we're doing in the bill, I think.
No, what you're doing in the bill is, you're saying that, that the landlord would have to pay a higher price.
The landlord pays, it's a standard sale, then. It's not a, it's just a standard sale, it's not a side yard sale. It's a sta, a landlord pays, it's just a standard sale that we start with anybody else, it's just a standard sale.
If this is passed.
It, it's the way it is now, like, if, if.
So why do anything? Why do anything? I don't get it.
Every time we do this, the city takes a loss.
Yeah, I know, we went through that. Sorry.
If we're going to take a loss on the transaction, it should be to the benefit of the end, of the homeowner who's there and wants to. If someone wants to do a standard sale at any point in time, they can come forward and make that transaction. And these lots are not going to be going for millions of dollars either. Like, a standard sale may be 2,000, like, it's not a lot.
I, I don't know what, I ain't know what to say.
Okay, uh, I'm going to make a motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Can we still have discussion?
I don't think we should.
You can have a, you can have a discussion.
Okay, I'm going to support that hold, but I just had a couple other questions. You got me for second round?
So, he, he made a priority motion, it was said that you can't have discussion on the hold, so.
Yeah.
No, I'm not going to discuss the hold.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the original bill, right?
Sorry. I withdraw my motion, and so you can make the.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so.
Hold on, would, would you please withdraw your second, Councilman?
I actually think we should move on with the discussion. We have several directors in the audience, and this is why we're motioning to hold, so that we can have a more fulsome discussion without taking up time on today's agenda.
My permit to ask my question.
If you're having discussion on the.
Yes, yes, I'm not talking about the.
All right, so, motion to hold is still on the table, discussion, Councilman.
Okay, so, first of all, when we say we're taking the loss, as you said, Mr. President, okay? It's getting on the tax rolls, so we're not taking the loss. We're going to be, you know, reaping the benefits for, nobody's paying taxes on it right now, and now we're going to be getting taxpayer dollars, right?
Yeah, but taxpayer dollars on a vacant lot are minimal.
But it's assessed, but it's assessed, but they pay taxes on the assessed value.
Right.
Okay, so, which is.
And we pay for the maintenance of it.
And we pay for the maintenance of it.
So we're taking the loss that way.
We're, we're, yes, we're taking the loss that way, but we're also, if you just look at how much we pay, okay, it's, let's say it's $550 to acquire title. That doesn't even account for the amount of time that it takes the staff for the law department and for the finance department to go through the sales process. That elevates that pl- immensely. So, let's, let's just say $1,000, and we're getting $200 back from, from someone that wants to purchase, right?
Eternally.
The mouth that's left, the tax money that we would receive, and we're talking pennies on the dollar, right? Would take years for us to just recoup the loss that we took to sell that parcel for $200.
I, 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 that doesn't make any sense to me, I'm sorry. Uh, how is it that we're not going to recoup our initial investment there when we're going to be getting taxpayer dollars? They're going to be paying taxes on that assessed value of that property forever.
If it's a, if it's a lot that's assessed at $300.
Well, no lot's assessed at $300.
Yes, they are.
A, a side lot is assessed at $300?
Yes, yes. You're lucky if you get one that's assessed at $1,200. So this is $10, people get tax bills for $10.
Pennies on the dollar, it's, it's hard to believe.
Well, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, so my other question is this, um, I see the solicitors here. Uh, is it legally okay for us to ban a landlord, a property owner, versus a?
But we're not banning them from purchasing property.
We're banning them from purchasing the side lot at $200. We're restricting them from doing it.
We're restricting them from buying something for $200, but they're not being restricted from purchasing it at all, ever.
I get that, but they don't have the same opportunity as the homeowner does, who lives there, right? So we are restricting them, they, they own the piece of property, Jennifer, right? Um, they should have every right and title as anybody else owns that property. I don't like it, I mean, it's, it'd be great to be able to, I'm just asking, is there a legal, did you check this out with the law? That's all.
Yes, and it exists now, like, if, they can buy property, they can buy the property.
I know, they can, but they can't buy it at the same price as the adjoining person that lives there, right? They have to buy, they have to buy.
They can't get it for $200, but what if we price it and it ends up being 250? So, I mean, it depends on the size of the lot. And to be honest, if it were a lot over $5,000 and the owner occupant of the property wanted to buy the lot next to them that was over 5,000 square feet, it wouldn't be a side yard sale either. We've had that happen, where a homeowner lives in a lot, lives in a house, the lot next door to them is 7,000 square feet, and they want to buy it. I don't sell it to them for $200 either, because it doesn't fall within those requirements, and it's literally a buildable lot, and they have to do a standard sale.
Okay, I'm just going to ask you real quick, a scenario, and then I'll drop it, and then we'll go on with the hold or whatever, okay? If I'm a landlord, and I have my tenants on this side, and there's a property owner here that lives there, right? Let's say the property is assessed at $1,500, okay? That's not unimaginable, right?
No.
Okay, right, so property's $1,500, right? So, the person that lives there gets the opportunity to purchase that for $200. Where the landlord on the other side, who's also a property owner and paying taxes to the city of Pittsburgh for his property or her property, they don't have that opportunity. And that's what I'm asking you, is it legally okay to do that? To restrict that person that, where they can't have the opportunity to buy the side lot at $200, but the other property owner does. I, I, to me, there's, I, I understand the concept, I understand why we're trying to do it that way, but it seems like that's a legal question for me, but anyway.
We can get the city solicitor to offer.
Well, you did that already, right? You, you've cleared this.
We, and we can clarify it again, so.
It would, sorry, it would be Jack Miller, I believe, in law, does this every day.
Say that again?
I believe it's Jack Miller.
Jack Miller.
Okay, 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 I, I'm done, I'm done. I don't, I don't quite understand, I don't quite agree with what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Councilman Charlotte.
All right, I'll, I'll be quick here, um, so I have, this is not a hypothetical for me, this is, I have exactly this scenario happening in Beltsuver right now. Um, so when the council president says that the land bank is the, the way to go for, um, for this property, it's on the corner of Gearing and Freeland. We're, I reached out to Sally yesterday about, you know, the process of this. The land bank cannot move a property for less than $7,500. That, that is what they need to, to move a property to cover land. So if we could go from $200 as a side lot or 7,000 as a directed sale from the land bank, the community group can't cover that cost. So, they're, they're not going to purchase this property. The property is going to stay in our maintenance, we're going to have to continue to pay for that. And again, council president, I, I do take some offense when you say, you know, you're talking to me about mapping out cleaning liens for me. I, I, I would venture a guess that no one on this council understands the, the nitty gritty of our cleaning liens and our court process better than I do. I spend time in, in court, I follow up with our cleaning liens, and I see, you know, a, a grossly inefficient process there, but our land care program is not efficient either.
Agreed.
So, you know, I, while I want to see these properties moved to someone so that we have an owner of record that we can take to court and someone to hold accountable for this, because we're, you know, my district is filthy, and I, I need help on moving properties through getting someone who can, uh, who, we can hold accountable and someone that we can, um, you know, do something with this land. The side lot program, in my opinion, is a way that we incentivize moving property. It's, it's not, it, it isn't necessarily a system as much as it is an incentive to move property quickly. And I want to s- to incentivize as much property to move as quickly as we can, uh, and that, that's why I want to support this. Or want to support, you know, continuing to see property go, and I don't care if it goes to a landlord or if it goes to an owner occupied space. Thank you.
All those in favor, did you say one week or two weeks?
Two.
Two-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill, the bill will be held for two weeks. That takes us to.
That takes us to invoices, need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The invoices are approved, that takes us to Interdepartmental Transfers, need a motion to approve.
So moved.
And at the request of OMB, I would ask that someone offer a motion to strike per Resolution 860 of 2023, they want to remove that from the Interdepartmental Transfers, and they, they'll, they'll resubmit on Friday the correct numbers.
Motion to strike from the record.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion on the transfers? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers have been approved, need a motion to approve the P cards?
So moved. Second.
We need a motion to waive the rules of council, PLI has their quarterly payment to the state for their licensing fee of $11,857 that they have to make quarterly to the state. We have a motion to waive the rules to accept that?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion, any further discussion on P cards? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
One, one no, P cards approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Cockeill. We have one new paper, Bill 792.
Bill 792, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by adding Chapter 625 entitled Automated Red Light Enforcement Systems.
Motion to approve. First, he walked away.
Second?
Second. Any discussion, Councilwomen?
Discussion.
Yeah. Discussion, Councilwoman?
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate all of the discussion that I've had with council members since introduction before recess. I've heard a lot of support for this, I simply want to hold for one week until I'm back in town to be able to ensure that I have any kind of further final discussion with council members before preliminary approval. So I'd like to make a motion for one week hold.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick, our supplemental papers, Bill 815.
Bill 815, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with C H and D Enterprises, Inc., for costs associated with the North Avenue construct, reconstruction project, and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $4,941,005.01, of which $2,800,000 are reimbursable.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, so I just want to, I don't want to call anyone up, I don't want to, well, anyone's time up with that, I just really just want to thank everyone who works on this project, the North Avenue Signals and Safety Project, but it's more than that, it's the streets, the sidewalks, it's making it safer, it's really doing updates, so whether it's OMB, DOME, everyone who's making this project happen, I appreciate all the time you're putting into it, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Form to recommendation, Bill 816.
Bill 816, resolution amending Resolution 191 of 2024, providing for a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the North Avenue Signals and Safety Project, and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $3,600,000, an increase of $1,100,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 80%, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs at a cost to the city of Pittsburgh not to exceed $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Form to recommendation, our deferred paper, Bill 742.
Bill 742, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for maintenance obligations of facilities on Butler Street. This resolution serves to authorize only the agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Form to recommendation, that takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, we have one deferred paper, Bill 221.
Bill 221, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 902.03 zoning map by changing from R M H residential multi-unit high density to U N C urban neighborhood commercial, certain properties located on Shady Avenue in the 7th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, known in the Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry as block and lot numbers 84G 239 and a portion of 84G 258.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Need a second? Thank you, all those in favor, say aye. Bill will be held for a cable cast public hearing. That exhausts our agenda before us, however, I believe Councilwoman Gross wants to bring, waive our rules to bring a bill back to the table?
Thank you, Councilman, I, so motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Any second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. So I'd like to, I think the motion is to bring Bill 2023, 2197 from the table? Actually, I cannot keep it straight, if it's bringing it, like, laying on the table or bringing it...
To lay it back on the table?
Yes. Motion to bring, motion to lay Bill 2023, 2197 on the table.
May we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and for, for members, oh, appreciate it, Louis, thank you so much. So for members, this is the temporary managed community bill that Councilman Cockeill and I co-sponsored last November, right, this is a bill from 2023, and that has been at Planning Commission for these, you know, 10 months or nine months, and that we have been working alongside of the Planning Department and the Planning Commission during this year, near year, to figure out how the code needs to change so that we can move the spirit of this bill forward. But this bill is, will have to, to move forward, the idea of the transitional housing that this bill speaks to, we're going to need to insert it in the new housing, fair housing zoning numbering that's moving forward at Planning Commission simultaneously. So we're basically clearing this one out of the way. Planning Commission is hearing a, a larger set of amendments to the zoning bill, and then we'll be able, after those move through council, we'll be able to then kind of reintroduce this where it fits more appropriately in the zoning code. So today, I would like your support, Councilman Cockeill, and I would like to, for us to set this aside so that it makes way at the Planning Commission for the other bills to move forward. So I'm going to, I think I'll, if I motion to withdraw, I kind of need the, the help of the, the clerks again here, if I motion to withdraw, does it take it from the council agenda, or do I need to just like motion to table? I'm not sure about my motions here either.
If you never want to have the opportunity to bring it back, you can withdraw it. If you ever want to have the opportunity to bring it back, table it.
Oh, I think we absolutely want to motion to withdraw, because it's going to be irrelevant, and we're going to need to completely redo the whole bill. So motion to withdraw.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been withdrawn.
It's several bills, right?
I'm sorry?
No, it's Bill 2197.
I thought there was more than one bill.
Just, this, this one.
That exhausts our agendas, or anything from members before I do meeting announcements, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I'd like to motion for a post agenda on the Section 8 program as it relates to landlords.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. Meeting announcements, next week due to the Labor Day holiday, council will meet Wednesday, September 4th at 10:00 a.m. for the regular meeting, and then again at 1:30 for the standing committee meeting. To register for this meeting, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Uh, it's recent, not here. Need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.